Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, June 14th, 7:30 in the evening. Glad to see everybody here. It's Flag Day. I had an opportunity to visit, to speak, or at the Elks Club when they did the official key turnover from the Elks Club's way, retirement box, to the Boy Scouts. And they also presented their $500 check to the Boy Scouts to help them out. So it was a good activity. I appreciated that. Thank you. Let the record show that everybody's here, and Jerry's still recovering. And I want to let folks know he really does appreciate. He knows your folks are thinking about him. Staff have been visiting with him, and he's doing everything he can do to get better as fast as he can. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Can we have him with us like an morning meeting by phone?
I'm not sure what he is able or able not to do, but we can talk to him about what he can try to do. We have a lot to do tonight, so we're going to move forward promptly unless there's objections. We have minutes from April, and then a couple other work sessions, and regularly meeting in May. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all favor. Signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Visitor and public comment? No visitor? Okay. Our visitor has no comment. I said we were moving forward today. In, there's a museum board appointment on page 13, as recommended by the museum group. And it's Ray Cantu. And so I...
Move to approve Ray Cantu for museum board? Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Good evening.
Good evening, Air Members Council. A few items to report on this day. So in follow-up to the last meeting we had on the rates special with members of the community, we've heard the requests to do something a little bit more public, and so we have scheduled a presentation with our former rate consultant, Ray Bartlett, for the community. It's really not necessary for council, be that you're welcome to be in the light, but it's really a community in response to some of the... It'll be really a replay of, by and large, a replay of the information that were presented in setting the rates the last time around. Ray, in economic and financial analysis, was here. So just so that the members of the community that had questions and how that happens, we can basically go get it from the horse's mouth, if you will. So he also will be prepared to answer more current questions that have been raised and try to be responsive to the community to answer. That's set for July 19th, tentatively at 6:00 PM at this point in time. Some are probably in the event center downstairs, that's his place. We reverse the reserved for the occasion. Just a little recap on something we briefly counsel on earlier. Independence Public Landing, public improvements. We are proceeding, going forward to get that shuttle ready. We will be coming up with a, well, we have a schedule that we're pursuing of getting one. We will be retaining the engineering services, where the RFP for engineering services will be closing out shortly. And then we will proceed with design. We should hope to have a bidding package available for the public work on that site sometime in August, and hopefully come to you with contract, potential bid contracts in September. We'll also see the contract for the engineering services sometime in July, probably July 12th, I believe, or July 28th, 26th. Last time's meeting July?
In July?
Yeah, I believe. 26th. So that's Flag Day, and you'll see the engineering services contract as well. We are working separately on zoning and comp plan, part of that work, and then we'll bring that to you as well through the Plan Commission. They have a study session scheduled in July, and tentatively in August, they will be looking at the proposed comp plan amendment and zoning amendments for that site, or the zoning for that site. We are also working to complete a subdivision for that location as well. So all of this is again going towards getting the project, the site, shuttle ready and for, and negotiations we may or may not have on that site. We are completing, we have, we are near completion on the transportation impacts work on that site as well, and trying to identify what would be the going-forward requirements from ODOT to meet the proposed traffic coming off that site. Hope to be, with the construction contract, hope to be in construction fall. If not fall, then in spring of '17 for the site work, for our portion of site work. It's all for the public side improvements on that side. So if you've seen, some of you may have been out there recently and seen some flagging at that site. Those are the flags that are at essentially the center line of the proposed roadway alignment, and that, we're doing some geo-tech work on that before we, as part of our design work for the bidding process. So that's what's going on there. Separately, apart from that, we are working with, again, continuing to work with Tokula Properties for potential private work on that side, and a private commitment to that location. So that's ongoing, separate and apart from the public work, and we'll pursue that. We, as you recall, and may have heard, I'm sure you've heard this already, but we have received collectively in whole county, one rare student we've been awarded. We will be interviewing on that shortly, so we're sharing that work with the county and the three cities. And so we'll have a rare student here to help with tourism activities. We are still, we're still working on that. We may have fresh off the presses news shortly, but in the meantime, we think we're getting close to, hopefully we'll have a secondary student that is dedicated to restricted independence for our downtown work as well. So that's ongoing, and Sean could have hot news, let me know. So I'm just moving along unless you have questions.
You're doing it, I do it fine.
Then we don't want an agenda, so I'll try to get through it quickly. Just a reminder to council, if you do plan on attending the Leve City's conference in late September, at the end of September, please let Karen know as soon as possible. She's doing the reservations now, getting the room, like, well, I don't know if I'm getting rooms, but she's doing the reservations down. So contact her directly, she has the signup information.
The visitor's conference is in Salem.
It's in Salem?
Yeah.
Oh, so you don't need to tell me.
So the Chamber Commerce, as you know, I've been serving on their board, and I will continue to serve on their board, but I thought it would be interesting to bring on a little fresh bud, a little fresh kind of view. So we will be sending, from time to time, Courtney Wings, our Venice Center Coordinator, I think she can bring up perspective to them that's a little different than mine, and might be helpful to the Chamber in their ongoing activities. I think they had a very successful event, the Mytown event, just a couple weekends ago, and so I think they're making progress, and I think she can add to that effort. She'll be helping them. You have, I believe, in front of you this, and so that's the latest statistics from Indy Works. The one that I find the most interest is actually the one on the back page that breaks down all the various kinds of service requests that are bid. There's a total of 18.6, about 57 or so, that we have been processing. Of those 57, 51 aren't completed. So that means we're doing good work on getting through this. And I think it's, I don't know if it works to ever admit this, but I think it's actually helpful to them in terms of, you know, their ongoing efforts to have it come through in this way, in sort of measured way, so they can schedule that accordingly. I won't look for any comments on that right now. Hallowa Boob, asphalt overlay projects have been completed, other than some minor striping. There's been some great folk residents in the area that have contacted us, so that was a real good project, good paving project for us. We are working on continuing the Riverside Desecrating Path. That work is beginning. The hardscape of where it ends now, between Riverview Park and the Dog Park, it will be extended all the way to the Dog Park with a hard path, big path, so that'll be fully accessible between the amphitheater and Dog Park. And then the park, Dog Park itself is, we are working on some improvements to make that fully accessible as well. So that's a good effort, that's ongoing. Another reason to go see Karen is she'll have a signup sheet for any, any that may have any interest in volunteering for Western Days. Lots, lots of reasons to talk to Karen after this meeting, so give her your love. We had a productive, and Counselor Beck was there as well. We had productive meeting this afternoon, I believe. You can tell me if I'm wrong. With the airpark, with the airpark groupers, like, a number of individuals have slipped from the airpark group. We reviewed a number of their concerns, many of which I think you've heard, and we are putting together a process to, like, to address those, and so they, we are following up on that area as well. And I think, again, more importantly, it was a pretty productive effort. So we are talking about, you know, looking at zoning issues, on amendment, code amendment issues. There's, you know, there's issues with respect to developments that are going on in the industrial zone now, and a number of different traffic issues. That's the broad umbrella of things, there are a number of different issues that kind of fall in there. We will, we will continue working with that group, and we'll come up with a very public process here shortly for, you know, members of that community and others that have an interest to engage in that conversation. So that's what I have for this evening, I really was having a gentle...
Great. Thank you.
Is there anything new about the LOC Hall?
Yeah, in fact, we have a status hearing today in bankruptcy court, so for, it's going through bankruptcy at the same time it's been going through circuit court on foreclosure. So the plan that was submitted, the reorganization plan, is a chapter 11 bankruptcy, was not acceptable to the court. They didn't dismiss the bankruptcy at this time, we didn't expect they would. So that's, you know, there'll be opportunity for them to continue to work on the plan. We don't really expect a lot of success there. In the meantime, the foreclosure is still scheduled to go forward sometime after July 31st, is the actual sale. That's how long we have to wait until we can schedule that. So if the case, man, if you had dismissed earlier, then we could attempt to proceed more quickly with foreclosure sale. That's about where we are.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have LOC legislative priorities, and what I'd like to suggest, if that's okay, if this is okay with everybody, I know there's a lot of things to try to get through on this, and what, instead of trying to deal with all of this tonight, what I'd like to suggest, and I've already talked to staff, is take a look, see what you think. If you have questions, talk to the manager, or if you can give me a call. I'm a past president, I still serve on the board of the LOC, if you have questions. And then before the next council meeting, you could each submit your top four to David, and he'll combine, put the, together, and then we can talk about where that is. Does that sound like a reasonable approach to everybody, rather than trying to do it in long form here? Okay with everybody? All right, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Let's move on to new business. Ms. Woodch, you get a lot of stuff today. Good evening.
Good evening. So first off, we have the ordinance or council bill for water improvement bonds, and I really don't have too much to add from my memo. We do have John Peterson here from Piper Jaffrey, who is here to talk to you about how this project and the financing of the project works within our rate structure as it is in place right now. So, John Peterson?
Good evening, welcome to council.
Good evening. Thank you, Gloria, and thank you, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. To try and be somewhat succinct, I don't really know anything about the need for the projects that's in the hands of your staff, but they were clearly identified in, as part of the rate study that was accomplished by Mr. Bartlett last fall. And the rate study also identified a rate history and the need for rate increases. There was a major 15% increase a couple of years ago. And what I can tell you is that the rate increases, as they have been accomplished and as they are planned, do seem to supply sufficient revenues that, together with the cuts in expenses, supply ample coverage in order to be able to pay debt service on this borrowing for these projects. The study proposed borrowing for 25 years and used a fairly conservative assumption with respect to interest rate of 5.34%, aiming to keep to a debt service, annual debt service of just under $100,000. Because we're in a very low rate environment at present, we anticipate that we can actually shorten that borrowing from 25 years down to 20. The interest rate should be in the ballpark of 3%, you know, give or take a quarter point with the time that we have, you know, remaining to plan to price those bonds. And annual debt service closer to $90,000 to $95,000 range, so actually improved coverage of what had been projected and paid off five years sooner is what we're anticipating being able to do. Perhaps in anticipation of another question, there is authority under Oregon law to issue bonds secured solely by the revenues of the utility. However, there's some benefit in terms of the number of investors who are willing to participate if the city also pledges its full faith and credit as a support. In other words, it's all legally available resources as a support of the bonds. And so this often is being structured as a full faith and credit borrowing. One change from the original plan, I do know, I understand that some bids came in higher than what had been originally anticipated, so instead of being 1.295 million, the borrowings anticipated to be 1.4. And even with that increase from 1.29 to 1.4, and shortening from 25 years to 20, we're still benefiting from the very low rate environment and having debt service in, you know, around $90,000 to $95,000 annual. Any questions for me so far?
Just, by going with the full faith and credit aspect of this bond and doing it at a lower interest rate, is that one of the benefits that we realized?
We would expect it to get you a lower interest rate, simply because you have more investors willing to participate, and so you, they recognize that there are more investors willing to participate, and set rates that are more aggressive.
Additional questions? As you recall, we've talked about this over time, and this is just the final paperwork on this. If there are no further questions, anything else you need to add?
Perhaps as a small bit of clarification, the ordinance is structured to offer both tax-exempt and taxable debt, and the reason behind that is there is a special subsidy afforded to small issuers, which the city has one, meaning those who issue less than $10 million in debt in a given calendar year. When the previous refunding was done, I think it was the City Hall bonds, the size of that issue was actually constrained in order to retain capacity to do the water project. But because there's some desire for contingency with respect to the, with respect to the water project, at a size of 1.4 million, we're just above what we would have under bank-qualified conditions. And doing, even though tax-exempt rates are lower than taxable interest rates, having perhaps your first two years in your serial, 20 years of serial bonds at a taxable rate, those tend to be rates that are maybe a quarter of a percent higher than they would have been if they were tax-exempt. But being bank-qualified as opposed to not bank-qualified picks you up another 15 to 25 basis points, almost a quarter percent, but over the balance of the 20 years rather than just the first two years. So the savings are considerable from, from doing that split structure, rather than making the entire issue tax-exempt but not bank-qualified.
Got it. Additional questions? If not, this is an action item, since we discussed it a bit, and there are motions on page 35, if someone would...
Would you like to start?
Could you please?
I move to read the Post Ordinance Council Bill 2016-04 in full as a Texas companion and council packet for the first time.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance authorizing the issuance of full faith and credit bonds.
I move to read the Post Ordinance Council Bill 2016-04, second time by title.
Motion, second. Discussion. All favor, signify with a say aye. All right? And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance authorizing the issuance of full faith and credit bonds.
I move to adopt the Post Ordinance Council Bill 2016-04.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. We're all okay on this? All right? All favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
The bill is passed, and will be assigned ordinance number 1546.
Great. Next item we have. Thank you. See you in a little while again. Danko.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. Here before you, once again, speaking of water projects, this is one of those. This is one of three components that we've talked about in the past. You've seen it with different documents, as they noted in the background. It goes hand in hand with the water, water transmission line that's under construction right now, is about, I would say, 9% complete, will be complete very soon, in the next couple of weeks. The added water that will be coming to the existing filter plant that we have needs extra capacity at that plant, and so this project is directed at that, at that engineering and construction. So as before, you know, we have solicited competitive bids for the construction of the water filter plant expansion. And they are the improvements of the filtration plant are designed for the increased capacity, the increase in flows that will be coming to it. I think I noted earlier, and I said it again here, talks about the gallons, and we have gallons per day existing, et cetera, et cetera, where we're going with this, and our water supply. We did publicly bid the project. Unfortunately, we only issued one bid, even though it was pretty well advertised. The bidder in this case was Cascade Water Works, who happens to do a lot of work for us, and has over the last two years. Anyway, I'm happy with the, with the actual company. It's just, to me, is a signal that things are now, have reversed somewhat, and they do cyclically, they change to a bidder's market, to the bidder's market. So the bidders now have the upper hand because everyone's busy, materials costs have gone up. In any event, the project really is critical, I'm recommending approval because of that. We've got about a 16% increase in the project from the engineer's estimate, and he gave, the engineers gave him some explanation for why he thought Cascade Water Works possibly could bid a little bit higher than expected. I think from my contacts in the construction world, it really boils down to the fact that everyone's busy. And so what, getting now, if they even bother to bid your projects, they're putting high enough on them, basically saying, if you want us to do it here, send them, we'll do it for, and you take your choice, age or leave it. So that's the kind of bidding climate we're in right now. But because it is crucial and connected to the transmission line project, I'm recommending that we move forward with the bidder award, and we'll get that project done.
So you can't wait and try and put out...
We would have to reject this bid, and then re-advertise, and go through the process again, and I think we'd end up in the same position. Yes.
Even if we did it off-season?
If we did it off-season, we will miss this year, and I am a little bit worried about that, which means the extra capacity we were planning on with the age transmission line would not be available to us this year. So if we suddenly run into a drought situation like we did last year, we have, I would guess, between 400 and 600 new residents in this town in that height, and a little bit of capacity. So I think it's very critical that we move forward.
It's certainly disappointing.
Yeah. Yeah, but, I mean, I've been here long enough to see the cycles come and go, where we actually, even though we see, say, three or four bids, they were all high.
Additional questions? So if we approve this, when would you expect this project to be completed?
Roughly August first.
Completed August first. Mr. Klein?
I just want to add, there's really nothing that we're seeing in forecasting, you know, economic cycles that lead us to believe that these prices are going to come, get any more competitive in the near future, you know, for at least the next couple of three years. So, I mean, that could change, it's hard to guess, but...
So the engineer's, the engineer's estimate, though, was that, is that an old estimate? I mean, is he not up-to-date on supplies and equipment? Is that why it's like almost 20% less?
It's roughly 16% on this one project. If you take all of the components together, the other water projects that we've done, it's actually not that bad if you look at it. No, I think he's pretty up-to-date, and it came as a surprise to him as well. There wasn't, number one, there wasn't a lot of interest, because everyone's busy. And, yeah, it's a, it's a problem that will probably get worse. Yeah. The question really is, do we put it off and gamble that we're not going to need that capacity, or do we build it now and be set into using that capacity if we need it later in September?
Can we have adequate budget to cover?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of gambling with that.
No, I trust Mike's opinion also.
Of course. What's the chain industry with this company that you've worked with in the past?
I can't think of any instances where I've had a problem.
So they typically, if they come in a bad business...
Typically, they're doing smaller projects for us, but they've been, they've been good to work with in the sense that they are local and they're on call. You know, pretty much, if we need them in emergency, they've been there for us, so...
They're local?
Yes.
Additional questions? Okay? Okay, if you care to?
I move to award the contract for the Pope Filter Plant Expansion Project to Cascade Water Works for $268,270 and no cents.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion. Pat, are you okay? Everybody else okay? I appreciate, just want to let you know that I appreciate your professional recommendation with this city, and, you know, I'll work with you for a while, and I feel really good on this, so.
Thank you. We are, we're dealing a lot with projects for capacity increasing projects, so lots getting that.
Let's go to the vote. All favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, surplus property. Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package is staff report on the disposition, disposal of, or excuse me, the disposal of 480 Williams Street. If you recall, that was a property received by a donation and went through and, they were going to demolish and clear the site. It was a severe code enforcement issue, so the owner was more inclined just to donate the property rather than address the many deficiencies. We have cleared the site, we put it up for bid with a minimal bid for a requirement of $10,000. We did receive that. put it up for bid with a minimal bid for a part of $10,000. We did receive that from neighboring property from Mr. and Mrs. Sadio. And we are asking and recommending that the council accept that bid so that we can re-admit that property and get it back on the tax rules. There is a typo in the proposed motion. That is Sadio, or should read Sadio, not as Sadio.
I have a question, please. On your discussion, it says that we are, not the June 14, we need, will hold a public hearing to consider the bid. Do we have to hold a public hearing?
Yeah, I've been in full public hearing reopening and.
Okay, so what, so, okay, so I'll wait till the, till David's done speaking, then I'll officially public hearing then hold for that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And I'm going to speak.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff too?
Yeah, just a quick question. Did you say that the Sadio's are adjacent property owners?
They are adjacent property owners, yes.
Is the $10,000 enough to cover all our expenses?
It covers our costs, yes. Very helpful, but it covers our costs. That's how we set the minimal. If the property, if it's not enough, otherwise we'll lock so combining it with an adjacent property is really the only logical way to have any more construction on that site.
Great. Additional questions for staff? Thank you very much. Is there anybody out here for a public hearing? Anybody have things they wish to say about this matter? I see no one stepping to the microphone. So without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you okay, Karen? Thank you. Well, you know, you gotta go through the right ones. Discussion, everybody okay with this? If someone would make a motion, please.
I move to accept the bid of $10,000 for the property located at 480 Williams from Antonio and Juana Sadio.
Motion, second discussion. Everybody said they're okay? All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Bush? We could see you for a while now.
Yes. Looking good. Thanks. We have a few things to take care of, all budget related. We, I'd like to start with our supplemental budget and budget amendments. The supplemental budget, you saw in my memo that we have a few plans with the supplemental budget. Pretty standard. I think the resolution is mostly self-explanatory. I would be happy to answer any questions.
And this is all the same type of stuff we discussed in the budget committee meeting?
Correct. I don't believe there's anything here that's a surprise and outside of what we had talked about during.
I was just making that for our TV audience, the fact that we're not going into exhaustive questions in all the budget matters. I mean, it has not been thoroughly thought that is discussed in the budget committee. I just wanted everybody to know that.
Yeah.
We've done our due diligence.
So probably, I guess, along that lines, the only thing that we did not talk about in the budget committee meeting was there is an additional, or a new inter-fund loan for this supplemental budget. And it's the resolution 16-1429. And it's the inter-fund loan between the transportation SBC and the Parks SBC fund. This is because the Parks SBC fund, after further analysis of it, it looks like it could possibly be underfunded or a negative fund balance at the end of the year. So this is just in anticipation of that and to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So this is just all cash flow from one place?
Exactly. Yeah.
Do that at home sometimes. I do that at home sometimes.
There you go. So what are the, are there, I'm going to ask, are there questions about, we have to do this individually. Are there questions about the budget amendments, the supplemental budget, or the inter-fund loan? Is everybody okay with all of these?
Yeah, I think they were nice.
You're okay?
I think we thoroughly reviewed this.
Yeah, thoroughly explained.
Right. Okay, so what we're going to do is we need to take these each individually.
Correct.
And so let's go with 1427. If someone made the motion for the resolution, please.
Okay, sir.
Or, excuse me, I'm, uh.
Tom, we start.
We, yeah, we, no, it's, this is just a resolution. We don't have to.
I move to approve resolution.
Yeah, I move to approve resolution, yeah, resolution. Go ahead, please. My mistake. Okay. I move to approve resolution number 16-1427.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, second discussion. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Somebody like to make the next one, please?
I move to approve resolution number 16-1428.
Second. I have a motion, second discussion. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And the third one, please?
I move to approve resolution number 16-1430.
No, two nine.
Oh, excuse me, two nine.
Thank you.
Page just.
It's all right. I have a motion, second. Who was the second here?
Second.
Second by, thank you. I want to make sure that, the discussion. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you very much. And carries. Okay, let's move on to the fiscal year 1617 budget hearing. And I think, and so I have a staff report that I opened from public hearing. Is that correct? Thank you.
I need to point out the one change in the, in the adopted, or the one that you would adopt tonight and what was approved by the budget committee. I stated it in my, in the memo, that there's a change to the building department in the general fund of $2,000 for utilities. And the water fund, same deal. It's a change of $55,000 for utilities, electric. And the $2,000 one had been pointed out during the budget committee meeting. We didn't put it in the language or as adjusted. So we'll need to do that here. And then the water one I found as I was putting together the approved budget. And so both of these are below the 10% that, and so it's legal for you to make those adjustments without any further notice.
Questions for staff? I don't have a public hearing on the budget. Anybody have anything they want to say about the budget? I see no one indicating any desire to say anything about the budget. And so without objection, I'm going to close the budget hearing. If there are no more questions, these are all action items that we need to go through.
Okay, shall we start with the first resolution?
Yeah, we can break the page here. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, it's a long one. I move to approve resolution number 16-1430. Should I continue reading a resolution adopting the City of Independence budget for fiscal year 201617 in the sum of $25,286,308 to approve appropriations in the amount of $25,221,409 to oppose the ad valorem, how do you pronounce that? Ad valorem?
Yeah.
Ad valorem property taxes for 201617 at the rate of 4.5897,000 for assessed value for the permanent rate and in the amount of $423,045 for debt service of the general obligation bonds and to categorize the taxes.
Okay, that's the motion, second. That's the motion, the second is their discussion. I hear no discussion. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to the next one. Authorizing the.
Inter-fund.
Right. You're such a good reader, Nancy. Can you read?
Well, now I know how to pronounce ad valorem. But I move to approve resolution number 16-1431, a resolution to approve inter-fund loans for fiscal year 201617.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Move to the final one. We're all.
I move to approve resolution number 16-1432, a resolution to elect, to receive state revenues for fiscal year 201617.
Second.
Motion, a second. I always think this is the one.
I love this one.
Yeah, you have to vote to take, to accept state money. That is it?
Is anybody getting this great?
Okay, all in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Karen, now I need to recess the city council meeting and then open the urban renewal meeting. Is that correct?
Or you can just go to the end of this and then open up the, you don't have to recess.
Oh, okay.
Just adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, adjourn this meeting.
Right. And then later on, I'll, we're going to come around later on and pick up council announcements at the end.
Oh, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, if you want to.
Yeah, so without objection, I'm recessing the council meeting. I'm now open the Independence Urban Renewal Agency. Everybody is here who was here. And, Ms. Bush, I think you have, oh, we have to, we have to approve the minutes from September 8. Is that okay with everybody?
One, two, three.
Somebody say second?
Second.
Second. January, September, oh, yeah.
2015.
Right. Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go to, are there any visitor comments related to the urban renewal budget, urban renewal agency? Don't have any there. Okay, let's go to new business supplemental budget. Ms. Bush?
Okay, we'll start with the supplemental budget. There was a grant that was received for the Independence Landing to remove a asbestos pipe that was underneath the ground. This supplemental budget appropriates that expenditure of that grant.
Money came in, money go out.
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve resolution 2016-01.
Okay, I have a motion, second, and a discussion. All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next.
So next is the budget for 201617 for the urban renewal. This has been approved by the budget committee. There's no changes between what was approved by the budget committee and what is for you tonight.
Questions for staff? It's in the separate section. It's the seventh. Yeah, it's the skinny one. Everybody okay? This is no different than what we discussed in the budget committee was approved. If someone would suggest action?
I move to approve resolution 2016-02.
Second.
I have a motion, second, is your discussion. Everybody's okay on this?
Just wanted to apologize for not reading all the verbiage on prior. It seemed to go through okay.
Yes, I think so. Karen, just make sure that we have done all the right words. Without objection, without any other discussion, we're all okay? All in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no, motion carries. And cede the urban rural debt to the City of Independence General Fund?
Yes. This is, we had talked about that, this in the budget committee meeting. And this helps to memorialize the debt that urban renewal is still, that urban renewal still has outstanding. This is a loan between the general fund of the city and the Independence Urban Renewal District. This has been incorporated into our budget document, both for the city and for the urban renewal district. Once, once the urban renewal is able to start paying back on the debt, we'll start putting it into the budget for the city as we receive.
And where am I here? Am I approving?
This is just for information.
Just information, that? Okay, thank you. I want to make sure that I wasn't misreading anything. Okay. Is there anything else related to urban renewal that we need to do? Have we got all the right stuff for you, Karen, for all the reasons? Laurie, we're okay on all the numbers?
We are. Thank you.
Okay, so without objection, we're adjourning the urban renewal district. I'm reopening the city council meeting. And now we are to comments and council announcements. Dana, you had some announcements related to WIPAC. I think you have some notes that you wrote.
Okay, let's see if I can read it. We had our WIPAC meeting this, this morning. And the board wanted me to share these things with the city councils. Number one, WIPAC has a longstanding desire to become a, an independent 501(c)(3). Number two, as it is currently an ORS 190 owned by the cities and their attorney lien, lien's opinion is needed approval of the cities and wants to dissolve the ORS 190. At this point, WIPAC is requesting conceptual approval only. WIPAC will also ask for a continued commitment of financial support either as a donation or as a contractual arrangement for cable casting city events. Those are the things that we talked about in our meeting today.
I think, is, did we discuss, we discussed conceptually, I think, letting them go to a 501(c)(3) did, yeah, I think we did. And I think everybody was okay with that, if I recall correctly?
There's, there's another issue that was raised, though this time that wasn't in the earlier discussion, which is dissolving the ORS 190 and supporting a conversion to a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, you have to do one with the other, yeah.
And, and I would like to propose that as a motion so it's clear that there won't be any more need to come back with this to the council. I think we are in agreement that this is the way we go. But I also think it would be more clear if it was in the form of a motion.
My question is, does staff need to look at this in a proper form and everything else?
Yeah, and I think you need to do that in the context of having the contractual agreement with the 501(c)(3) in front of, there needs to be an entity ready to step forward when the other entity is dissolved. So I think the, I think that was implicit in the council's accord.
Has that been formally conveyed to the WIPAC association that Independence has approved by consensus their move to a 501(c)(3)?
I think.
We haven't heard.
That's, that's what I was concerned about. At least the letter, our city letter had been saying that the council has, has felt no objection to this.
Without objection, let's just do that, Karen. That'll make, that'll make layne likes to have the paperwork done. And I think your, your comment, David, was appropriate. You got to have one, you have to have one in place before the other can go away. Otherwise, you end up in play. So if staff would send the appropriate paper to do that, you're good. Are you good, Karen? Council okay with that? Everybody all right? Thank you, Diana. That's good. This is helping move that process forward step by step.
Thank you.
Great. And I think there were some other announcements, please?
Oh, yes, I have an announcement. This Friday afternoon, evening, afternoon, 4:00 to 5:30 at the Old Library, there's going to be a little ceremony that is, includes the Women's Club of Independence, now known as the GFWC Polk County Service Book, and the City of Independence, and the Friends of the Library, and Ashby Park Center. We're all going to meet there together at the Women's Club on Third Street and have a piece of cake and a glass of punch. a piece of cake and a glass of punch, and celebrate the fact that after some gentle negotiations with the city.
Very gentle.
That's what I heard, it was, you know, consistent and gentle, the negotiations of the city to change the deed on the Old Library to reflect a larger, the arts and literary for the community, rather than just have it specifically for library use only. So this allows the Ash Creek Art Center to be a part of the Old Library, to use it for classes and for cultural events and things like that, and so, Tracy Weston, the president of the Women's Club, thought it would be kind of a fun thing to have a formal, formal, informal little celebration. So that's this Friday, between 4:00 and 5:30, at the Women's Club portion of the, you know, because they have all the room and the punch bowls and the stuff like that, so.
Celebrated for party?
Always celebrated for party, and I went to Ross, and we're going to have a nice big sheet cake, so, it should be good, so everybody come, have, have fun.
Have a good lunch.
And the OD, and celebrate the OD, and David, you particularly, you have to say a few words, probably.
Happy to do so, it may be nonsensical, but I'm happy to do it. Additional announcements from this side of the room? Additional announcements?
I have three.
Okay.
Well, one, several other questions or comments. I was taking a little drive down C Street this evening before I came here, just to look at what was going on with the property and admire the view for Independence Landing. I noticed there is a derelict, looks like a 15-passenger bus down there. Has that been looked into by code enforcement yet?
No. We're wanting the parking lot behind that old little car.
It's far more visible than it used to be.
Is it on private property?
It is.
It, it's behind the last three buildings on the south end of that, or the, whatever end it is, on the park end of the block.
Did you have a comment?
I were happy to take that referral, I would urge you to take a little bit of Hindi words, it's a nice place to go to, to.
But I'm right here in the center of the coverage.
You brought my phone, if you like.
The second was a question for our city manager. We, I didn't receive this, but the Masonic Lodge received, which I sleep with the treasure, received a notice from the City of Independence about notice of administrative action. I have never seen one of these before, and I wondered what predicated it, and why it was sent to particular people, I'm just curious.
I actually don't know this, Karen.
That probably came from the clock, and what, and that is an administrative land use action, often as before the planning commission has done, and has to do with the, do that. It's like a sign of you or.
It has to do with demolition of an unused storage building, but it comes on City of Independence letterhead.
Because it is a city action.
Okay. And, and the third thing is to remind everybody that it's getting closer all the time. The week before we go to, the Lita Morgan Cities is the Ghost Walk, and I'm looking forward to having many of the people in this room volunteer, and it won't help to sink down in your seat, Sean. And so just put you on notice that probably the first of next month, I'll be sending out letters looking for volunteers, and the communities were just delighted last year that we had both the mayors there, and I think it'll be a good thing to get involved in, and I also wanted to do a thank you to Sean, because he was there at the park today for the first of three sessions of Art in the Park that's sponsored by the Independence Town Association, and he was making bubbles.
Right.
And it wasn't raining.
And it wasn't raining.
That's great.
And it wasn't too hot either, huh?
This is true.
Yeah.
Anything else that we need to do tonight? Without objection, somebody moved to adjour?
Moved to adjour.
All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, we're done.